Welcome, everybody. Let's begin tonight with, I will stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it's 7:02 PM and I'll call this meeting of the Westwood Planning Board to order. Welcome to the Westwood Planning Board meeting. I'm David Atkins and I will be chairing the meeting. All of our meetings are recorded by Westwood Media Center. And if there's anyone else in the audience who wishes to record the meeting, please identify yourself now as we want to, as we need to make everyone aware of that. I don't see anyone else who wants to record this. So, as a reminder, please turn off your cellphones. The agenda is available at the back of the room. And this meeting will follow the order on the agenda. The meeting will be civil and all people will be treated respectfully. The format of the meeting will be when an item is called, the applicant will come forward to the podium to present their application to the board. The board will proceed to staff comments and board members will ask questions of the applicant. Then the public will be given an opportunity to comment. When it is time for the public comment period, the chairman will call those wishing to speak to the podium. Once at the podium, please identify yourself by stating your name and address for the record. All comments and questions shall be directed through the chair. All people will be given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be cut short. And I just want to remind everyone to please come to the podium to speak and use the microphone because everything is being recorded by Westwood Media Center. And often if we get into kind of a thing where people in the audience are asking questions directly, it doesn't get recorded and so it's hard to tell what's going on afterwards. So that's why we always want to emphasize the importance of using the microphone. So with that, Abby, are there any changes to the agenda?
Just for item one, this is your public hearing for 200 University Avenue, the EIDR. This was continued from your last meeting. They've again requested more time to submit revised plans. They're working on new plans for parking and stormwater improvement, so they recommended or they request a continuance to your November 27 meeting that would take place in this room at 7:00 PM.
So I think we just need a motion to... I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for the EIDR at 200 University Ave to Tuesday, November 27 at 7:00 PM at 50 Carby Street.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So that motion passes, that meeting will be continued. The second item on the agenda, Wegmans University Station Modification to Signage, a request to extend the timeframe for the cart corral reusable bag signs and a request for project-specific signage alternative for four sandwich board signs. Is someone here from...
I'm Dave Rolowski for Wegmans. So we're asking for the reusable bag signs to be continued for another year. They're not visible from the public right-of-way. They are for the betterment of our community. There's no negative impact on the community. It's in the parking lot proper. We have new customers every day and our existing customers appreciate the reminder and we've been told that by them, so.
I'm curious, how many, do you have a sense of the percentage of how many people are bringing bags in versus using the bags from the store?
It would be a guess, but I would say on a Saturday, I'm usually up there bagging groceries, helping out, and I would say probably every third customer is bringing in reusable bags.
And I think we originally approved this, the idea that we would be up there, that the signs would be up for a while to change behavior. I mean, do you see more and more people remembering to...
Yeah, I have people actually telling me over the summer when we still had the signs up, I had a person button hook around and go back to their car because they remembered their bags when they saw the sign. So it does make an impact and it does help. And I think it's good for the community to have that reminder that that option is available, which is a better option than plastic bags.
Are there any board member questions or comments?
I don't have any questions or comments with regards to the signs that we have approved. So are you looking for one additional, an additional year for it?
Ideally, I'd like it to be permanent, but if, you know, certainly I respect the board and if we can get an additional year, I'd be happy with that.
Was the original approval for two years or one year?
Originally, they requested the signs to be up permanently and the planning board two years ago had recommended a condition of one year if they returned to you and a year to reevaluate. So last year, you extended it until this September. So right now, you could consider either lifting that condition or upholding it or extending it. Those are your options.
For this type of sign, I don't mind extending it for a couple of years. I personally don't feel like approving it for perpetuity. I don't know what other board members think.
Well, like I said last year, I feel the people who use reusable bags, use them; the ones who don't, don't. I don't think any sign's going to change that behavior one way or another.
Do you have any other comments? I'm kind of more inclined to think that it's, you have constantly turning over new customers and stuff. I forget a lot of times if I, by the time you get to the door, some places have the sign at the door and so by the time you get there, you're less likely to go back to your car, but you see it a lot. But I, so I think extending it makes sense. Any other thoughts? Let's see.
I think my gut reaction is if we want to extend it one more year, that's fine, but I think next year, we decide it's either in perpetuity or we're done.
Got it.
Because three years is plenty of time to change behavior or we're leaving it up just to be a constant reminder, I guess. But I think to make them come back year after year, asking for one more year is kind of silly for this one sign. So I'm fine putting it off for another year, see what happens then, but I think after that, it's...
Yeah, but I think the benefit of extending to, let's say, to two years would be maybe there's a better way to provide signage or let's say the signs are getting beat up and then we then don't have the authority to say, can you replace them? It's been, some of them are looking not as nice. That's how I feel about the, like, the two-year limit. I don't think it's too much to ask. But I do like the signs. I think it's a nice idea.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to make a motion to... The question I ask is the one-year or the two-year?
I'd support two years.
I think two years.
Yeah, so I'd make a motion to approve the applicant's request to amend the original project-specific signage alternative to allow for this signage for an additional two years.
Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? The motion carries. The second, I believe the second item now is a discussion of the sandwich board signs.
So again, we're asking to expand the sandwich board signs or the sidewalk signs. Again, they're not visible from the public right-of-way and there's three photos paperclipped together. The second picture will show what the view would be from the public right-of-way of those signs. And then the third photo shows the distance from, of where those signs would be displayed from the University Ave. They won't be intrusive to our customers or to the safety of our customers. They're in fact a service to our customers. We don't see a negative impact on the community and they're an opportunity for us to remind our customers of the value that we provide them.
All right, are there... I believe when we had considered this before, we were concerned about temporary signs because they're not as, permanent signs is kind of, well, it's permanent, it's there and it doesn't move. Temporary signs can kind of move around and start to look a little shabby and so are there thoughts from board members or...
Yeah, I also had similar concerns to that. I also don't think that they're... I like the signs at the carts. They've actually, I've gone past the carts and had to go back to my car for my bags, haven't forgotten them. The additional signage, I don't know if that will have as big an impact or as, an additional impact need considering the fact that they are temporary and they can move around.
Well, it's my opinion that we went to a lot of trouble to come up with these zoning bylaws when we first went forward with the project.
Right.
And the temporary signs are just not permitted within our bylaws. And I don't think we should be negotiating against ourselves.
Okay.
I know when this project first opened up, University Station, they put a few of these around and they didn't look good. They got bounced around, they were held up to light posts with chains so they wouldn't get moved around, but they still fell off the curb and looked awful and required someone to go back and fix it. And I wouldn't anticipate that to happen here, but I think just the nature of the temporary sign, it just doesn't fit with what's down there. I wouldn't be inclined to support this.
Well, we would maintain high standards with how we displayed them and the safety of our customers would be primary to us. We certainly would have the same concerns that the board would have.
Yeah, I'd, do you have any other photos to share beyond that which you've shared with us? We had a number in the packet.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's photos that we have of the signs. So that base is probably two feet by three and a half feet and it's filled with sand. It's pretty hard to move. So the, what you were referring to with the plaza signs, they never filled their bases with sand, which is why they blew over and created a hazard to customers. These signs are on springs, so they don't flip over, they kind of bend with the wind.
And you use those now, don't you? There's two of them up right now.
Yeah, we have, when we first opened, we had approval to get some right by the front columns of the building as you enter that first archway. And the idea that with the, where we're placing them, so there are ballards down the front of the building to protect the building, I guess, from cars. They would be placed where those ballards aren't, so they would be consistent with objects or obstacles that are already existing in front of the store.
Yeah, I mean, I think the corral does the trick. The temporary signs, I don't think look as nice either. So I'd like to make a motion to deny the applicant's request for the temporary sidewalk signs upon finding that the proposal does not address the needs of development and may interfere or impede pedestrian traffic and circulation.
Second.
So I would also, and now I realize we didn't ask for public comment on that first discussion, and so if there's anyone who would like to comment on this, welcome your input now on this or the previous item. Is there anyone who wants to speak further on this? Okay. I do have a motion and a second to deny the request. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? So that motion passes and the request is denied.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, 200 Manhattan Street, Westwood High School, a public hearing for a limited EIDR request to install lights at the high school tennis courts. This is continued from September 5th. And in the meantime, I believe we've all had an opportunity to go on-site and observe where the lights would be. We also visited the property owner, Mr. Resha, to see from his backyard what perspective might be. Is there new, Abby, do we have any new information on this?
Yes. Yes, you received in your packet the light report on the 40-foot light fixtures and then comparable of the 50-foot light fixtures with the corresponding data. There is also a response, a narrative response to the questions from the planning board since your last meeting. And the applicant is here to review some of that with you if you'd like.
Would you like to come to the podium and...
Hi, good evening. Nicole Banks, Westwood Recreation Director, and I'd like to start off tonight by allowing our school department personnel to say a few words. There is another meeting going on in just a few minutes, so I'll let them start off and then we'll give you some further information.
Thank you. My name's Heath Patrak. I'm the Director of Business and Finance for Westwood Public Schools. As Nicole said, unfortunately, there's a FinCon meeting happening on the other side of town that we need to get to. But I want to start off by saying that the school department's fully supportive. I know before you is the question of 50-foot poles or not 50-foot poles, and I know you've looked at the property. I've worked closely, and the school departments worked closely with Nicole to take a look at the engineering reports and really give it a lot of thought. And to us, it just seems to make sense that the 50-foot poles, what it does for us is it gives the most consistent light coverage of all the courts as well as the least amount of light spillage. And so to us, it's sort of a win-win and it seems to make sense for us to do. Unfortunately, again, I have to run, but I have brought our athletic director here to answer questions and to give you a little update on how this would impact the students or athletes at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Matthew Gillis, Athletic Director for Westwood Public Schools. When Nicole and Heath had brought this up to me, they just wanted to know what type of impact this would have for our athletic department. And I just see it as a positive. Right now, our tennis team, we have boys and girls, Varsity and JV, and the way our practice times are set up really limits the amount of time that our teams are able to practice during the year, particularly earlier on in the year in April when we have less light during the day. It also will impact how we go about scheduling our matches. So if we did have lights, much like we have on Flahive and multipurpose, it would allow us to be able to schedule things later in the day, which I personally enjoy. It allows more people, parents, to be able to show up to games when we're able to schedule them at night. It would allow our teams to have more practice time throughout the season as well so that we're able to give... Currently, right now, when we have our Varsity practices, they separate so the boys or girls, you know, one will practice for about an hour and a half and then the other team will come on, practice for about an hour and a half, and then our boys and girls JV team will then come and practice together with whatever light is remaining. And our JV teams combined, we probably have close to 25 to 30 players combined on that and we have six courts. So the amount of time that they actually get playing on courts is even more limited due to the space that we have in time. So it would greatly be able to allow us to increase the amount of time we have for our teams to be able, be out there, practice, as well as being able to schedule matches at night where more people will be able to, parents will be able to show up at night and watch their son or daughter be able to play tennis, so.
Is it correct that the, with the 40-foot versus 50 or 60, the lighting levels that you need for competition are different and so you need...
I'm going to go, that's a great question because I've never dealt with ten, you know, lighting for tennis courts. I think that's something that...
We'll have Mike Berry come up next.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. I just wanted to confirm if, I remember from the last discussion, I think there was the 50-foot provided an angle that allowed for more lighting and therefore that was necessary for competition or something.
So I'm going to let Mike Berry address the questions pertaining to lighting and the two reports that are in your packet, the light engineer reports from Musco Lighting, which have been provided for this project.
To answer your question, again, Mike Berry from Musco Lighting, to answer your question in terms of the 50-foot poles versus the 40-foot poles, the average light level, we can achieve the targeted light level for high school tennis. The uniformities are a little bit different. They're better with the 50-foot poles versus the 40-foot poles, meaning it's a better distribution along the court, so the uniformity in terms of higher versus lower different light levels in the different areas of the court is better with the 50-foot poles. In addition to that, if you've looked at the scans we've provided, you can see that the color-coded chart that everybody tends to refer to in terms of what the glare is is substantially different with the 40-foot pole. There's also spill values in there. I mean, you can see with the 40-foot pole, it bleeds out a lot further because we don't have that same, we lose that 10 feet of aiming. So we can get the same targeted light levels, but the impact to the surrounding area is substantially more. And that's kind of that sacrifice that we're trying to achieve by going with the 50...
It's basically like by raising it, you, by raising the lights, you focus down...
Yep. Matter of geometry, it's just the aiming angle of that fixture. When we get 10 feet, we reduce, you can see, we keep it pretty close to, and that's, again, that's the glare. If you go to the foot candles in terms of the spill, you can see we're at decimal points from, I think it's 150 feet that we provided, but, and it's substantially more with the 40-foot poles.
So in that diagram, that's where if you're standing in any of the colored areas, you'd be able to see the light.
Correct. You're seeing that source of light, exactly.
So that actually reaches out into the, into those yards and stuff there.
Yep.
And in the fall, if there were no foliage, you'd be able to see the lights.
Correct.
It's a worse situation, yeah.
It's worse than...
So it's the, it seems like it's just the fear.
Yes.
That what you're saying is not going to be true.
Right.
And then I'm going to look at 10 more feet of aluminum or whatever the metal they are.
Yep.
Yeah, the taller pole has a lesser impact.
It's not...
From the ground, I mean, to say that's a 40, that's a 50, it's kind of hard for the human eye to pick up what a pole height is.
I've visited the tennis court, it seemed like the trees were about 50 feet tall. Does that seem generally...
I think we've taken some measurements.
They are around that, yes.
I know, it varies.
We do have the, we have the view shed which shows our GIS coordinator put a 50-foot pole height next to them and the top of the pole is lower than the tree line.
I can pull that up. I don't know if it worked on your packet a little, oh no, let's see.
I have to open the program.
I think it was in the presentation that you'd opened before.
Okay, we had a little video that kind of showed around, but...
I didn't see the video.
Oh, sorry. Okay, well, we have the...
We got the light shed.
It's one of those slides. Yeah, it is.
Was it?
The one you passed.
Did I already pass it?
Yeah. That was...
Oh, yeah.
It's from ground level.
Yeah, is what that is.
So the trees are probably 60 behind it, at least that, in that picture.
That location.
And that's a 70 or 80-foot tall on the multipurpose field?
Correct. I think those are, I forget what they are, but they're either 70s or 80s, yeah, which is standard for a football application.
Those are 80s, yeah.
Okay.
And then there was that other diagram two weeks ago where you showed where the higher the pole, then you don't, you can't visibly see the light.
Yeah, so I mean, that's what this slide is talking about, that a 50-foot pole allows us to reduce that aiming angle because you're further up above so you can direct that light down versus a shorter pole, it's 10 feet, but it makes a big difference when you're talking, you know, total of a 50-foot pole.
It seems to me that the taller pole, the 50-foot pole, has less impact and will allow for a better spread on the court, keep the light in the court, and then the students will be, and the residents will be able to benefit from the lighting.
That is what we're trying to get across here, that it's...
One other question is the timing on it, is it a 30-minute button or is it a 60-minute button?
That can be set and, once it's installed and based on whatever Nicole or you guys decide. I mean, it's programmable, so you initiate that at the beginning and what the setting is and how often they turn on and off when the button's pushed.
Which is one set, so there's two sets of courts, so it only lights one set.
Yeah, we have it set up so you're doing groups of three.
Yeah.
Where did you come up with the 10 o'clock shut-off time?
So the 10 o'clock shut-off is based on the town's bylaw. Our field and athletic lighting is to be on no later than 10 PM.
So if you see that they're not using it, say after 9 o'clock, are you, because I know that there's one resident who's against the lighting, I mean, is there...
Yeah, those are all considerations that we can take under advisement. Our Recreation Commission would look at that. We have a field policy where we could have more stringent recommendations on things and I think that is something that we want to monitor. We've, you know, our discussions so far have been starting off having the first set of three courts available to the public and see how that goes and how busy they are and if the demand is there, then setting the second set to be available for public use. But to have all the lights available for high school use, any recreation programming, tournaments or things like that would be available.
That is the beauty of the push button, is that if nobody's there to push the button, then the lights don't actually turn on, so.
Can you override that, like if you have a game, a match going on and instead of having to have someone run over there?
Yeah. And that's something that we're going to have to work out from a control standpoint on how we go about doing that when there's obviously high school competition going on.
Well, is it going to work on a motion detector or would it's going to turn on, it's going to turn on for the set time?
It's the user will push it on, so it'll be controlled by the user and then set for an amount of time to stay on.
And how long will that time be? We still don't know yet?
We've talked about 45 minutes as, you know, what we think would be in a reasonable amount of time that somebody would want to play and then you'll get a signal, just a light signal that it's going to turn off and if you want to set it again, you can do that.
Is there any reason why we don't have an override off switch? Say if somebody's done, they played for 10 minutes, strained their knee, they can't just shut it off on the way back?
I don't, I don't think the control allows it to be, like, push the button again and turn it off, you mean? Yeah, it just needs to run through the timer at that point. To be able to control it with the timer, you're kind of saying that you want that option, so it's just selecting to go with that rather than just an on/off. So we could try it for shorter amounts of time. I mean, those, these are things that we'll be able to have control of the system so we can kind of see how it's working. We can also get some feedback. We can put a survey out and, you know, let people know that if they're using it, to please let us know what the feedback is. You know, do they feel like the time set is enough for what they're using it for? You know, we do get a lot of feedback. People don't like lights being just left on, so, and seeing an empty court, so we'd want to keep it tight enough, but not that the players feel like they don't really have enough time to get through playing a game.
And there's no sound associated, like it's not a, it wouldn't like beep or something, right? It's a...
I believe it's a light. Light indicator.
Yeah, so you wouldn't want to have it like, you know, beep, beep, beep at about, you know, 9:58 PM. Okay, that's good.
So just to kind of wrap this up for you, we've been here previously with discussions. We are recommending a 50-foot design plan. It's the proposed layout because it accomplishes all of the goals that we set forth with the project. We are able to get the highest quality light and the least impact to the neighbors with this design plan. As you can see by comparing the 50 and the 40-foot plans, the 50-foot plan has no impact beyond the school property. So we followed the property lines to keep all of that within that footprint. This proposal is the best plan for the tennis players. That includes the high school athletes as well as the community and recreation players, the school property and for the neighbors, particularly those on Manhattan Street. It was mentioned that with the 40-foot, you do have more of the glare going out across Manhattan and we do not have the buffer forested areas there to keep that impact away. And then with the 50-foot design, there's no direct light from the fixture that hits any abutters regardless of the tree barriers. This will end before those properties, property lines come into play. If there was nothing but flat open space between the courts and the abutter, there would be minimal if any impact there. So, and I know you did a site visit, so you'll have further information that you've collected as well.
When are you looking to do this?
So we do want to move the project forward. We would like to try to put it forward. We have to do an equipment purchase and a bid for the installation. We have everything ready to go. We'd like to move it forward. We'd like to move it forward and have it installed prior to the winter season. If we do get delayed, then we'll have the spring tennis season followed by the summer recreation season, and so that would delay us quite a bit. So ideally, we'd like to get it in and have it ready to go for this next spring for the tennis teams.
Starting in March?
Yes.
And ending Thanksgiving? Is that what you said before, sometime in November?
Matt, when does the tennis go?
Right, tennis is just spring, but for recreational use in the fall.
Oh, yes, we, we would be year-round, whenever the, the snow comes and usually around mid-November.
It's one of those 72-degree February days. In theory, you could go hit the button.
Yeah, I'm trying to think. I think they take the nets down at some point. DPW usually removes the nets because we do usually get some snow occurrences, so I would say mid-November is, is what we've discussed as, as the typical season end. You never know in New England.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this? So we have, in this instance, we have a number of waivers that we would want to consider and then the actual action of whether to approve this or not. So the waivers that are being requested, there are four. One is a waiver from the filing fee since the town is the applicant and we want... The second waiver is a waiver from the requirement that the proposed site plan show the full property details such as drainage, landmarks, trees, utilities, upon finding that this requirement is not necessary with the project, given the existing plan showing utilities submitted. The third waiver is a waiver for the requirement for a traffic study, and the fourth waiver would be for presentation model. So...
So I make a motion to waive the, the following application items that David just spoke of.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? So we grant the waivers, and does someone want to make a motion for the application?
I'll make a motion to approve the limited EIDR application with the conditions that we talked about, that the lights would not stay on beyond 10 o'clock, that the stormwater systems and utilities be protected during construction, and that no portion of the light pole or fixture will be higher than 50 feet above grade level.
I second.
Abby, there were some findings here also that you wrote up. Do we need to incorporate that into this?
There were some, three findings based on the new information you received tonight. If you need to elaborate on those, um, this was, um, based on the new report, said the 50-foot poles have, um, the less glare onto the surrounding area than the 40-foot that you had seen, um, more even light distribution, and that, um, found that it would not, lights would not have an impact on the nearest abutting property, which is 200 feet away. So you could incorporate that, um, something, I guess, based on the findings.
I'd be willing to include those.
So we have a, we have the motion with conditions, and we have these three findings that you just summarized, Richard, and written out here. Everyone has.
Yes.
So Chris has made the motion.
My motion is based on those findings.
Can I second that?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The public hearing is closed. The next item on the agenda is Five Eldridge Place, a public hearing for an earth material movement permit to import more than 200 cubic yards of earth in the rear of the property to level the yard. This is continued from August 7, and I believe we've had some, work has been done. Abby, do you want to update us on where we are before we invite the applicant up here?
Great. Um, since, let's see, in August you continue this hearing to this meeting because you want to allow time for the applicant to go to the Conservation Commission, which they did early in September, and they did, um, got approval at their Conservation Commission's last meeting. So the plan that you have before you has been revised to appropriate the Conservation Commission's, um, approval. Uh, you did also request, uh, letters, um, from the two abutting property owners about the fill. Um, did you get those? And I uploaded those into your packet, um, yesterday, that they at least agreed that the fill that was already placed on their property could remain, just related to the fill, um, no structures or any work to be done on the property.
Okay, is the applicant here, and would they like to present any updates, or...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm John Glossa, Glossa Engineering, 46 East Street in East Wollpole, and here's Joe Urrardi here, the owner of the property. So I don't know how much you want to get into it. We did from the plan that you saw, um, at the last meeting, we made about eight changes, most of them fairly minor in nature, and as the town planner said, we did receive, the Conservation Commission hasn't issued it yet, but they closed the hearing and voted to issue an order of conditions. All of their conditions are reflected on this revised plan. So, um, I did see Abby was kind enough to send me an email earlier. The only thing I would sort of comment on is it said six test pits. We've done three test pits at the site, maybe three more test pits, six, I think, we're, it's not a huge site, so six might be a bit of a overkill, but either way, it's, it's not that big of a deal, but it's just a lot of, a lot of digging for, a small lot. I think three more would, would, would do, right? There's already been three dug, witnessed by the Conservation Commission agent.
Who requested the additional three?
I did, just before I come to this meeting, updated meeting summary, as the applicant mentioned, they did three soil tests to check the soil. I'd recommend at least three more. I was thinking six total, just to make sure that the even spread, um, this is to verify that the fill that was, um, placed throughout the property is not contaminated, so we request, I guess, the location, so we can either be present for it or see the location, soil tests.
Oh, yeah, well, we, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, excuse me, but I, I wouldn't do it unilaterally, so I would either ask you or, or someone from the DPW or whoever you recommend to come and, and witness with me. Yeah, I wouldn't do it unilaterally.
I would accompany that with a statement certification from the project engineer that the soil is not contaminated.
Right, we, we don't have a problem with that. I mean, today, we dug three holes, you know, on what they call a soil evaluator, right, a Massachusetts soil evaluator, so I do a lot of soil testing. And we dug it down so that we could see where the original ground was, and we dug enough into the original ground to make sure it was original ground, and I think we found, you know, one small stick, you know, about this big, came out of the, sort of the side or top of one of the holes, so there's no, i- i- in the three test pits we did, there's absolutely no indication.
Wasn't there, forgive me, uh, in my memory, there was a second, not this zone, a second import of soil at some point in the past?
That I don't know about.
No.
No. Like I said, I, you know, even today, I was out doing soil testing, so I'm out there two or three times a week. It's pretty easy for me to identify, fill natural soil. In fact, in this case, you can actually kind of see the grass that used to be there when you get down to the old topsoil, so...
Okay.
But, but I gladly do three more, and like I said, I, I wouldn't, I would do it in the presence of someone from the town.
Okay. Did we, Phil, did you want to say anything or anything new?
No, I think that's the last, the last thing.
Okay.
The other item Abby brought up, and I think we brought it up either with you or the conservation, is, you know, the drain pipe that exists, existed on Joe's property when he bought it, but my advice to Joe would be just to grant the town an easement because in the future, when he goes to sell, if somebody realizes there's a town pipe on there, it could prevent him from selling his property in a, in a, you know, in a manner that he wants to, in a, in a timeframe that he wants to. So the best thing to do is just clear that up now and, um, grant the town an easement. And we, we're going to take Phil's advice and sort of break it up into two easements, the one that's actually on the lots that are called out in Joe's deed, and then the part that would actually be in the street, so that in case Joe does have ownership rights in the street, he would be granting you the easement over the ownership rights that he has.
That's fine. All right, are there any, any other questions from any board members?
Nothing additional from me.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any, anyone else who wishes to speak on this? Okay, so we have, um, we have a, an application and a number of possible conditions.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the earth material movement EIDR for Five Eldridge with the following conditions: that the applicant's engineering shall perform additional soil tests at multiple locations throughout the area, at least a total of six that we had discussed, and submit the soil test locations and a certification statement that the fill does not contain any hazardous material, that the applicant shall remove the extended portion of the drain pipe as noted in the plan, and that the applicant shall prepare an easement plan and easement document for the drainage pipe and provide to the town planner, Public Works, including Beta. The, then the application is, the applicant is responsible for preparing the drainage easement and finalizing the conveyance to the town, including providing all required documentation.
A second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Abby, another question, um, did we confirm that the, any of the fill that was on the abutting properties, that that was, that the people were, that either had been removed or they were okay with it, or what was the status of that?
Those are the two letters you got yesterday, that they agreed to allow it to remain. And you see those from, I think it was number 17, number 25.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Need a... No, we just need to close the...
So I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We have closed the public hearing. The next item on the agenda is 1200 East Street, another public hearing to construct a caretaker/watchman living quarters on the second floor of an existing garage, and...
Good evening. My name is Michael Viano. I'm here on behalf of Prevent Realty Trust, and with me are Mary and Buddy Prevent, the owners of 1200 East Street, as well as the adjacent, the abutting properties at 1198 East Street and 21 Westwood Terrace, which is their principal residence. The, all the properties are zoned highway business. In May of 2015, the planning board unanimously granted a permit for this same, for this, this amendment to the existing EIDR approval for the building, and the Prevent Realty Trust applied for building permit in 2016. At that time, they believed that sprinklers would be required on the first floor of the building, but the building department ruled that it would be required on both levels. That created a situation that required that the existing main to the building be increased to a larger size. All of that drove the cost of the project up considerably, and it got delayed. We did not realize that there was a two-year limit on that EIDR approval, or we would have potentially sought an extension or at least made a decision whether or not to find the funds and go forward. However, in the interim, there have been several incidents of vandalism on the property. The property is located right off the East Street exit at 128, next to public storage. We've had incident of empty liquor bottles on the property. There are several very valuable and expensive trucks inventory and the property, which is kept in pristine condition by the owners. And they had decided this year that they really need to go forward and have somebody on the property, and we found out this summer that in fact, the amend, the approval of the amendment had been, had lapsed, so we're here seeking the board to reissue that approval and, in exactly the same form, we understand that the entire building needs to be sprinkled at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Any sta, any comments from staff, or...
I think the applicant described it nicely. That's what I was going to say was that this application was, where the garage was constructed through an EIDR in 2010, then in 2015, this request for the, um, accessory use for the caretaker/watchman, um, on the second floor of the garage, um, was before the planning board in 2015, and that was, um, approved, and the fire department had requested sprinklers at that time. Um, I didn't realize that was the delay, but I think, um, that would be again a, a condition, and the fire department would also review the building permit applications when it comes in, and they would like to have the same recommendation for the sprinklers.
And this, sort of the living quarters, it's a specific section in our bylaws that permits this as an accessory use, so it's not like an apartment, or it's not something that, you know, could be rented out to someone else that's...
Right, there's a specific in the accessory use section of the zoning bylaw for, in the highway business, it's allowed to have, they're allowed to have a caretaker/watchman living quarters.
Is there a...
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions for the applicant.
No other questions? Yeah, and this, basically, we've approved the same thing in 2015, so...
Yes, and also in 2015, you had recommended a condition that the caretaker/watchman be either employed at the business or have a contract to watch over, watch over the business.
We're fine with all of the conditions from the 2015 permit.
All right, is there, is there anyone else wishing to speak on this? Thank you. No one else wants to comment on this?
I make a motion to approve the EIDR application for 1200 East Street with the condition that the applicant contact fire department for review, sprinklers indicated already are necessary, and that the caretaker or watchman occupant is an employee of Prevent Oil or a similar independent contract responsible for, for patrolling the business.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Any abstentions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Things are moving along too smoothly this evening.
Don't start talking like that.
Okay. So that was item five. So the, the next item on the agenda is 357 Fox Hill, and...
Oh, we changed your order?
Oh. Well, I thought it was...
Yeah, I thought it was, um...
Sorry. Is that...
No, that's not the one I have.
Tennis.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to take up 357 Fox Hill Street. This is a pre-application conference to review subdivision options.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Luke Legere, McGregor, and Legere. I am here this evening on behalf of Tom and Tammy Rizor, who are here in the audience. They are the owners of the property at 357 Fox Hill Street. With me also tonight are David Johnson, Senior Project Manager from Nord Engineering, as well as Tom Aaron, Vice President of Coldwell Banker in Wellesley, and the broker for Mr. and Mrs. Rizor. So thank you very much to all the members of the board this evening and to Abby and staff for taking a little time out of a busy agenda to talk with us a little bit about the options for the Rizors to subdivide their property. It's a five-and-a-half acre parcel of land, right on Fox Hill Street. It's a five-and-a-half acre parcel of land, right on Fox Hill Street. It has about four hundred, almost 450 feet of frontage. It also has an existing historic house, which was built in about 1740. There's an associated walled garden and a barn out back. And so the Rizors, in exploring the options for dividing this property, really are focused on trying to save the historic aspects of the property, save the home, save the walled garden, save the barn, and really keep as much contiguous frontage along Fox Hill Street as they possibly can. As you'll see from the, from the plans that David has put together, and here are some photos of the property itself, as you'll see from the plans that David's put together, there are a few options for the Rizors. They could come in with really a straightforward A&R proposal. They do have the frontage and the acreage to create two lots, under approval not required, but to do that would require demolishing the house, the barn, and the walled garden. They also have the option of going with just a straight two-lot subdivision, but the same problem arises there. So their preferred alternative, as you'll hear a little bit more from David here momentarily, would be to try to develop a two, two-lot subdivision using the board's lane policy, lane subdivision policy, which would effectively put the, the subdivision roadway, which is essentially be a driveway for the, for one, for one of the lots, in the same location that it would be really proposed under the A&R proposal. So there's really no, no distinction there. There would be a waiver required for the lane subdivision proposal, though, because there would be, as you can see here, a slight offset between the proposed subdivision roadway and the existing Fox Meadow Drive across the way. So without further ado, I'm going to hand this over to David Johnson. He's going to just quickly walk you through the plans. I think Tom Aaron might have just a couple notes for you on sort of the historic value of the property as well, and will be happy to answer any questions and appreciate any guidance the board might offer. Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you. David Johnson from Nord Engineering. We prepared the concept plans. As Luke said, we're attempting to use the lane policy, which allows less of a right-of-way, less of pavement, to provide frontage and access to one lot. This really is a one-lot subdivision. That's kind of an oxymoron, a one-lot subdivision. But the subdivision control law, besides regulating the subdivision of land, it also regulates the construction of ways. So in this particular case, because we lack the frontage on Fox Hill Street to create two A&R lots without disturbing the historic structure, our preferred option is to proceed with the lane policy. As part of that, we have to document through proof plans that the project could be developed without waivers. So Abby, if you move it back to the Form A, we've, we've documented here that we can create two lots that comply with zoning for frontage width, area, lot shape, by essentially dividing the parcel exactly in half, both with the same amount of frontage. I think it's 221 and a half feet of frontage for each lot, to document that we could do this, but in this case, the demolition of the house would be required. If you go to the next one, the second alternative would be a true two-lot subdivision, with the subdivision road center line aligned with the center line of the subdivision in existence across the street. Again, we've created lots, and we've documented that they can comply with frontage, area, lot shape requirements, and that there's ample area on each of the lots to build, build the structure. But the preferred alternative, if you want to move to the next one, is to do this one-lot subdivision to provide the adequate frontage for the new lot, and provide access. In order to do that, we would require a waiver of the subdivision regulations for the offset between the proposed roadway, AKA driveway, and the existing subdivision across on the easterly side of Fox Hill Street. The interesting thing to note here is that, under the subdivision alternative, the proposed subdivision road is in pretty much the same location as the driveway that would be proposed if we were to pursue the Form A alternative. So our request is to get some direction on whether or not we can pursue the lane policy, given the fact that this alternative, the preferred alternative, would allow the house to be retained in its, on its own lot, and without disruption to a house which provides, you know, significant architectural and historical character to the town of Westwood. So that's the reasons for us being here, and why we believe that we've proved through the proof plans that the property could be developed without waivers under subdivision, and without subdivision approval under the A&R provision in the subdivision control law. And I'd be happy to answer any questions unless, Tom, you, are you going to say anything? Or, okay. I'm done.
Give those photos, happy that you can. Just that aerial view first, if you have it. That's great. So I'm Tom Aaron. I'm a lifelong resident of Westwood. My family's been part of Westwood for over a hundred years. By way of background, I am a historic property specialist, certified by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. I'm a 20-year board member of the Westwood Historical Society. I'm the land consultant for the Westwood Land Trust, and I'm a corporate trustee for the Trustees of Reservations, which is the oldest land conservation organization in Massachusetts. I've had the privilege of working with the Rizors for the last four years on this project, for four of the five years that the property's been on the market. And I think the important thing to point out with this property is it's not sort of a 1950s split-level house. It's, it's definitely a property that, you know, has some cultural and historic significance in the town. I'm sure every board member here has driven on Fox Hill Street and seen this property. You know, I consider it sort of an iconic, you know, dwelling in Westwood. The Form B, form that I gave, that I just gave the board, is a form that is developed by the Mass Historical Society, and so we know what the history of the property is from the original owner, from the 1700s. This property has had seven owners. The owners started with John Frederick Richard in the 1700s. It passed to John L. Fisher in the 1850s. The Fishers had oxen, horses, bulls, cows, and pigs on the property. It went to George Faring III in the 1920s. The Farings were the family. Abby, can you go to that walled garden photo? So the Farings were the family in the 1920s that developed this kind of walled garden. These are really, you know, beautiful old granite pavers with the, the brick wall. And then it went to a family by the name of Dabney in 1939. Went to another family by the name of Hall, who raised sheep and sold wool from the property. In 1981, it was sold to a family by the name of Schwanbeck. They really modernized the interior of the house, the kitchen, and did some additions and that sort of thing. And then the Rizors acquired the property in 1997. So the house is about 278 years old. The Rizors have been terrific stewards, I would say, of this property. They had previously lived in another historic home in Precinct One in Dedham before they purchased this. In my experience on the board with the Historical Society, they've lent this house out on numerous, numerous occasions for house and garden tours, and different fundraising events for the Historical Society. People in town, you know, have been very anxious to come in and look at this property. Can you go to the barn picture? We also have on the property an original 1700s barn. I've had this barn completely inspected by a professional home inspector. This is all original post and beam construction. It's an eight-stall barn. This little addition was probably a tack room that was added sometime in the 20s or 30s, but it's in really remarkably good condition for the age of the property. Probably has a little bit of termite damage and powder post beetle damage, that sort of thing, but that's, you know, that comes with the territory. Can't really see it here, but there's a really lovely set of granite steps with a hitching post where, you know, one would mount a horse. This was kind of for carriages coming, coming around. So in, in marketing this property, what we, what we know after five years is that there's a huge demand right now for new construction. There's not a huge demand right now for people buying these, these old houses. And in trying to do this sort of subdivision, what we're attempting to do is to sort of lower the price of the dwelling, to allow maybe a younger couple to come in and buy the property, renovate it, you know, at a more reasonable price, and then be able to, you know, split the lot off in the back. The benefit of the plan that, of the plans that Dave, the lane exception plan that Dave prepared, is that a new construction home would be in back of this barn. That's where the building envelope would be. So from the street, from Fox Hill Street, you actually wouldn't see, you know, the new dwelling back there. So we have lots and lots of people over the, you know, course of marketing this property that of course want the land. You know, we're trying to come up with a responsible plan where we can retain, and the Rizors are, you know, pretty responsible. They really want to retain the house, they want to retain the walled garden, they want to retain the barn, but they also want the ability to, to subdivide the property and be able to, you know, to sell that lot off. And as, as, you know, Dave explained, you know, by right, right now, we could, you know, we could split this into two A&R building lots, but by doing so, the dwelling, the walled garden, and the barn, unfortunately, would have to be, would have to be raised. So as a steward of, again, of the, of the town, and the, sort of the historical significance of, of these sort of three components that go with this, with this property, you know, we're looking to get a little bit of relief from, from the board here to, to try to accomplish something that's going to, you know, ultimately benefit, you know, the town. Any questions?
So just to understand the, I don't want to oversimplify it, but it's, it's, are you saying that the, as the property exists now, it's hard to market it because it's so big that it's, it's too much, and by reconfiguring it, it makes it more sustainable long-term?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I could, we have buyers right now, I, we could sell this property, you know, tomorrow, to people that want to just take the house down and build houses on, you know, on, on the two A&R lots. That's not really what we're looking to accomplish. What we're really looking to do is we're trying to come up with an alternative where we can offer this, you know, beautiful house, the walled garden, the barn, at a more reasonable price, and then, you know, and then sell the lot off. And I think by reducing the price for this, you know, parcel, which would be, you know, the house and the components on, you know, a little over two acres, I think there, there are more people out there that, you know, would be interested in, in acquiring that and, and doing the renovation project. My clients have recently spent significant amount of money doing a renovation on their second floor, but I'm sure the next owners are going to want to do sort of a new kitchen and, you know, bathrooms, and sort of the normal updating that, you know, that, that people would look, look to do. But we looked at, we met with Abby in, in August, we've, we've met with Dave, we looked at a number of different alternatives to try to really save the property and keep the integrity of those three components there. And, you know, this seems to be the plan that, you know, that makes the most sense. We had, we had talked to Abby a little bit about, you know, what about the idea of, if I can come up here a minute? Of kind of doing a little sort of jog here, and then, you know, coming back? And it was, I think what, what you came back with was that the planning board really doesn't like those irregular-shaped lots.
Right, right.
That they want 175 feet of frontage to be consistent.
Right.
So we've looked at a number of different alternatives, but again, the, the goal here is to try to preserve this.
Now, since, since we don't have a, we don't have a historical bylaw to, as we know, we can't prevent anyone from, you know, six-month delays, the best that could happen, but what, I'm just trying to think of things like, is there, would there be a possible deed restriction or something that could be done to protect a historical property when it's sold? Is that even an option?
So deed restrictions are really tricky. You know, Luke may want to comment a little bit more on that from a legal standpoint. My experience over the last 28 years selling residential real estate is, the minute you put a deed restriction on a property, you're really penalizing the seller, because it really adversely affects the value of the property. And I think it's really difficult to, to put a deed restriction and then, you know, and then future owners can't do what they want. I mean, there may be a, a future owner that comes along that says, gee, I don't really have a need for a barn. I want the house, I want the walled garden, I don't really want the barn, so I'm going to take the barn down. So from the, from the Rizor standpoint, you know, they've owned the property now for 21 years, and again, they've been great stewards in the, you know, of this property, and they have maintained it intact, that sort of thing. And so again, I think we're trying to come up with a solution here that, that, you know, keeps everybody happy. I don't know whether you have any further comments about deed restrictions, but-
Aye.
Any, any other questions?
That was right on, I would say.
Okay. Any other questions?
Now, the reason, I was just trying to think of other poss, because the goal, if the goal is to keep the seven, the 278-year-old house, so that it'll be a 378-year-old house someday, and this is sort of a proactive way to avoid the potential of, of a developer or some, someone coming in and buying the property and doing that A&R subdivision, put up a couple of $3 million houses and we're done. So this, we are at a stage where we can try to preserve the property. However, even if you do this, there's no saying someone wouldn't come in and tear it down. So it's just if you're trying to put together a solution that protects the historical property, just trying to think if there's anything outside of the box that could add to that.
There's one other option I've, I've thought of since, you've had this on, since I think maybe late last week. So this plan is a subdivision plan, this third option. So that would require subdivision application, public hearing with you, then you would have to waive down your road, construction, road width standards. Another option would be to apply for a frontage subdivision, where you, the first step would, they could go to the zoning board of appeals and request a variance from the frontage to get the frontage on Fox Hill Street. That isn't done too often. I don't know if we've done that here in Westwood before, so it looks like, so essentially, the lot, this would be the frontage, and then it would be shaped like that. So it's not that common here, but then there wouldn't need to be a road on paper, or it would be, the frontage would be on Fox Hill Street instead of at the back of that lot. But that would be a two-step process, so you would have to prove hardship to the ZPA for the variance, and then it would be an application to you, but the frontage would be on Fox Hill Street rather than on this new dead-end road.
And it has to be a geographical hardship?
So yeah, to, to get a variance, you have to establish a hardship stemming from either the shape, topography, or soils on the lot. It needs to be distinct from the neighborhood generally. I frankly haven't really looked at that here. My sense is that that- My sense is that that would be a serious uphill battle for the resource to be able to obtain a variance. I have done, I have gotten similar approvals, not in Westwood, in some other towns out here in the Metro West area, for that type of thing, where we go get a subdivision approval and then need variances to essentially legalize the non-conforming lots that were created as part of that approval. But those are always really, really unique situations and circumstances. You know, one that I'm thinking off the top of my head, had an access point that had been the driveway for this home for 200 years, and that was effectively the frontage for the property. There's no way it actually satisfied the frontage requirements, but the board looked at it and realized that because of the way the lot had been configured and because of the fact that there was virtually no chance of this ever occurring anywhere else in town, they were willing to grant the variance. Here, it doesn't, it's not immediately apparent to me that we'd be able to qualify, but it's certainly something we could take a look at. Really what it boils down to is, you know, and as Tom alluded to, having worked with the team here for a while on this and put all our heads together and tried to figure out the best way to be able to get another parcel out there, save the existing home without having to go to that step of putting a deed restriction on it or having to worry about variances, this really did jump out as sort of the easiest and we think best option. And again, the reason we're really here this evening to try to get a little feedback from the board is because it would require that one waiver from the offset requirement in your subdivision regs. So it's not quite as straightforward as the other two plans that David put up before you earlier this evening. But, you know, in our opinion, where the subdivision control law and your subdivision rules and regs do allow for waivers, where the waiver's in the public interest and is consistent with the intent and purpose of your zoning bylaw, in our opinion, we check those boxes. The historic value and historical value, excuse me, cultural value associated with the home, with the walled garden, with the barn, we think is certainly something that puts this property in the public interest, saving that, saving as much frontage along the scenic road. And Fox Hill Street is a designated scenic road. We think all is in the public interest, and where your bylaw does protect the interest and one of the stated purposes of your bylaw is to preserve the cultural and historical character and heritage of Westwood and protect the environment, we think we are, you know, right within the interests of your bylaw and not at all inconsistent with that. So again, in our opinion, we think this would qualify for a waiver, but we're here this evening to see whether the board agrees.
Abby, what about the, if it was a, so is this a proposal for a one lot or two? Would they both be a part of the same subdivision?
I think both properties would be involved. They're really creating one new lot. The existing lot has the frontage on Fox Hill Street, so it would be a subdivision as shown, so that would be a public hearing with the planning board. Then you could consider waivers to the construction standards for the road width. I would also recommend that you would maybe even go further than that and decrease it to be more like a driveway. You have a special permit, a shared driveway special permit? Well, I guess it's not even shared.
Right, that's like 250 feet maybe.
So then I guess you would, you could consider reducing the width. It would be a road on paper to create the frontage for the back lot, but I'd recommend it not look like a road on the ground so that you would have maybe 14 feet of pavement so that it looked more like a driveway from the road. But it would, you would still need to have the subdivision plan on paper, creating the, essentially creating the paper road and creating the frontage for that rear lot. So you would have to have a subdivision, have waivers, but I would recommend the construction standards look like a driveway rather than the full cul-de-sac or a full curbing sidewalk.
And we're certainly happy with that. That's really where we're trying to go generally with this proposal.
I'm in favor of that type of direction with that. I'd like to see the house maintained, but as David said, the next person that comes in, it doesn't mean that they're not going to do as they want with that property, but that plan I am in favor of, that type of direction. When we see the next.
Thanks.
Yeah, I would agree. I like the efforts to try to keep the house intact, but, and I know this is the only way to actually achieve that. It's just, it would be a damn shame to go through all that effort to just, the next guy come in and level it and put up a new construction house that Mr. Aaron indicated most people want.
As a subdivision, don't we have, can't we impose some conditions and things? I mean, I know there are subdivisions that have come back to us for modifications and all, don't we have some of the same ability to?
Someone wants to level the house on their property? I don't think we have any say in that.
Not the actual house. For the subdivision application, you're really reviewing the public or the right-of-way infrastructure and layout and new lots.
We're now talking about houses.
Yeah, not necessarily the houses themselves, unless for open space.
OSRD subdivision.
So that was your last meeting was a different section of the zone.
Say over what's built.
When you divide it anyway, that you end up having two driveways instead of side-by-side, it's front and back.
Or the, I think as proposed, the existing driveway to the house would remain on Fox Hill Street and then the driveway.
That's all trees right now, right? Where that drive, that second roadway, driveways?
Orchard? Yeah, there's an orchard there.
So that's all going to be altered by that driveway. And we can also, if we want, even though this is a subdivision, if they elect, the other driveways gravel, right? Would they be allowed to pursue that as a, or does it have to be paved? Is that something you can?
Just as back portion of the barn is gravel.
Oh, okay.
Oh, the driveway for the house is asphalt or concrete?
That's the courtyard in front of the barn.
Okay, so that's asphalt?
So this would be asphalt.
Okay, so a second asphalt wouldn't appear out of the ordinary? Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think we're all, this is an opportunity to kind of proactively do something. The other option, though, is, you know, it's been fine for 278 years the way it is, so could probably go another. But, you know, that's, the other option is to do nothing. But, you know, in terms of how to, what can we do to prevent a bad outcome here and try to kind of get in front of something? Yeah, I like the approach there, come up, whether we call it a shared driveway or something like that, it's, it looks pretty clear from the aerial photo that what you're talking about is just you want to put a house behind this house, you have a huge lot, and there are a lot of those situations in town where there are long driveways that go back to something that's behind another house. And that's, there's on Thatcher Street, I know there's a situation like that and a lot of those places.
Right, and I think this is under the 500 feet from the length. Okay, it's like 443, is that right? 400? Okay, so 500 is your maximum length?
They've demonstrated they could do this as an AIR.
Yes.
So this waivers just to try to make this project better?
Yeah. Well, that's, yeah, and back to your point earlier, Mr. Atkins, about sort of doing nothing, I think that has been what the resource have been trying to do to sell the property essentially as is. And as Tom mentioned earlier, unfortunately, that's just not been working out. And so rather than just going the other route of selling it to a developer to just raise the house and do that, you know, straightforward A and R, again, this is what we saw as sort of a creative middle ground which gives the house and barn and walled garden a chance.
I think is that?
I have nothing else.
Because we're just kind of providing our, it sounds like we're getting some feedback from the board.
We have nothing to vote on or anything?
Yeah.
Do you have a public comment? Is there anyone?
Any public comment or would the owners like to say anything or?
We thank you for listening to, you know, just some historical perspective that plot there to the left of our property. We bought the house in 1997, actually all 17-acre, all the way down to K Street. It was up for sale. Unfortunately, we couldn't buy, we loved the house. We bought eight or 9.2 acres, and we did sell what was two buildable lots, just one lot to our neighbors now who built the house. I don't remember the number.
Can I repeat this one up here?
Yeah. So that was a 3.6, it wasn't two buildable lots, but we, it was our preference to try to have one house that was set back there. So that was the agreement with, and so the idea of keeping sort of things off of Fox Hill here with a lot that was, as you said, behind, basically wanted to be something behind the barn, hope that have some kind of smaller piece of property would give that property companies to do work on our house in the interior, all the work we've done over the years. We haven't had to change the outside, the character of the house on the outside when we did a renovation project. It's all, we're able to keep the exterior of the house as is.
Well, thank you.
Have you had any discussions with your neighbors about this, your butters?
Not yet, no. So we wanted to sort of.
Yeah, no, I understand. I'm just curious.
I see in layman's terms, it's, we're, you know, trying to put a, sort of another driveway in that would go back to, so it wouldn't be as big as a subdivision road as we're all talking about. So I would think that, you know, our neighbors would be more affected below us for that new driveway to go into where we have, you know, this down apple orchard, that would, those neighbors would be people we would try to be down to.
Along sort of the property here? So yeah, the plan, maybe it might be easier to have, if you can just pull up the preferred alternative. So really, you can sort of see here, there's kind of a strip there which is sort of no man's land. It's really not part of either lot, but would provide a good buffer to the neighboring parcel there. And I don't know that we've really, you know, we didn't want to sort of put the cart before the horse, so we would certainly just put a little thought into exactly where the ownership of that strip would go and exactly what it would be used for and so forth. But, yeah, that is another sort of aspect of this. They do have that buffer which, you know, again, provides a good screen to the neighboring parcel there and would provide opportunities, I think, for likely stormwater management and so forth.
The other thing was to try to preserve some of the tree, apple trees.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, very good.
Yeah, it seems like, it seems like that stretch of trees is bigger than the 14 feet that Abby was suggesting. So if you could carve one, right, so it looks like a winding road through trees.
After we bought the property, we planted a large evergreen right along the edge of in that buffer zone as a way, just because we knew below us it was going to be.
Yeah, well, trees are so far spaced out that you could easily put the smaller driveway in and.
Without affecting.
I don't think you'd knock down a single tree quite right.
I'm sure that neighbor would appreciate that.
Yeah, and certainly anything, anything we could do and anything that the board might want to see in terms of getting sort of creative with that drive to get, again, as Abby was talking about, reducing the width of it a little bit, making it more of just a single-family driveway essentially, protecting the environment, protecting the aesthetics, we're all in favor of that.
Yeah, I think that a lot of, we've had other applications for things where there's kind of a, if you're trying to shoehorn things in or something, but this is, the purpose is to preserve and there's no, you know, there's no roadway out the back or, you know, there's not multiple properties involved here that wouldn't other place be possible. It seems like it's something that we would be able to work with.
I'd just add one thing.
Do you want to just grab the mic so they can hear you at home?
The other advantage of doing this and creating that winding way off of Fox Hill Street is that Fox Hill Street is a scenic road and the maintenance of that visual, I think, is really important as opposed to creating another lot with another big house 40 feet off the street or 60 feet off the street and preserving the character of the street. This certainly does that by putting the house to the rear and creating a meandering driveway rather than having another large house sit close to the street. So not only the house, but the scenic road, I think, benefits from the proposal.
All right, well, thank you. Thanks for coming in, and I think we could move to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
The next item, consistency review for building permit floor plans submitted by Pulte Homes of England, Westwood Place at University Station. Chris, you're going to.
Yeah, I need to recuse myself on this particular topic.
No, you can go. Thank you. Have a good night.
Do we have someone here for Pulte Homes or is this?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll start off. For, if you remember, well, Debbie's new, but in February, the planning board approved a project development review and special permit for the 100 condos at University Station. It's by Pulte Homes, it's called the Westwood Place at University Station. Two buildings, 50 condo units in each building. The way the process works for all applications, but it's a kind of a higher-level review with University Station, whereas once it goes to the planning board, then they file with the building department for the full construction plans. So before the building department can issue any of their building permits, I have to issue what's called a consistency review to make sure the plans submitted to the building department match the plans that you approved. And for when I was reviewing Pulte's plans as they're moving forward with their construction, I had concern about the floor plans. The zoning only allows for two bedroom, no more than two bedrooms. What came to the planning board was a mix of one and two bedrooms. They, the floor plans, I had printed them out in your packet. Hold on, let me grab them. They were there. So you had them tonight, a copy of, I think in the back are the floor plans that you approved. So there's not as much detail on them. There are, I think, 23 one bedrooms and 27 two bedrooms in each of the buildings. And there was some, an open area, open areas, and then, which would kind of be considered a den. However, as I reviewed the floor plans, plans submitted to the building department, there's more detail and there's these dens in the two-bedroom units, which caused more concern for me that they could be converted to a third bedroom, which is not allowed in the zoning. So they did, they did show a five-foot cased opening, and those dens don't have windows. So according to the building code, if there's no doors and windows, they're not bedrooms. But I wanted to take this to you for your input. So I'm looking for your feedback as to whether these plans are consistent enough with what you approved. If they are, I could ask for any revisions that we needed on these plans to move a building permit forward, or if not, then the special permit should be amended for you to take a look at these more carefully at a public hearing, to look at this more detailed floor plan. So that's something you wouldn't be able to do tonight. It would have to be, the October 23 meeting would be the next available meeting to get it publicized in the newspaper and notices out. Because on the, the building plan, um, plans, like, I copied, um, the third floor plan, there's two bedrooms, the, I guess, um, looked like what is a, um, the den and kind of an open area to the, um, living room and kitchen. Um, but we do have, um, Mark here from Pulte Homes who might be able to talk about the details of the floor plan layout a little bit more.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Abby. For the record, Mark Mastriani, uh, from Pulte Homes of New England, where the applicant, the developer of Westwood Place, um, and where the permutee of the, uh, project development review that Abby is speaking of. So I, I'm hoping, uh, to come here tonight to, um, to supplement the discussion and try to provide some more information to the board, so hopefully we can work together and, um, arrive at a, a positive outcome for us here. Cause this is, this is not an argument, this is not a confrontation. We believe that our plans are fully in compliance with the permit and fully in compliance with it, with our submission, uh, fully in compliance with the zoning, so I'm hoping you'll give me the opportunity to, 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 um, provide some information and go, go through that. We have no interest in, um, providing three-bedroom homes at Westwood Place. We are, we are not marketing three-bedroom homes. We do not have three-bedroom homes, uh, and the plans that we submitted to the building inspector are not, do not have any three-bedroom units. And what I'd like to do is to see if I can gather my thoughts here and just try to, um, capture, so I was here during all of the, you know, um, so just let me step back. So I was here during all of the meetings, all of the public hearings for Westwood Place. Um, I participated in all of the discussions and presentations and the floor plans and the unit styles was never discussed at, at our, um, presentations during, during any of our meetings. So this, this issue that Abby's bringing up is really a surprise to us. I just wanted to, to say that. Um, we, we proposed twenty-three one-bedroom units and twenty-seven two-bedroom units. That's what our plan showed and that's exactly what we've submitted to the, to the building department. So just, if I may, I have three copies and I'm sorry I only have, um, three copies, but... So let me just step back. So what I just put in front of you was for our original application, for our submission, those were the floor plans that were, that was submitted of our fifty-unit buildings. So our fifty-unit buildings have four stories and the first two levels have thirteen units and the third and fourth floor have twelve units each. Uh, and the floor plans that we submitted with our application are detailed on that first sheet, um, that, that I just provided to you. The floor plan that Abby is looking at and that she's showing to the board, uh, was a more detailed first floor plan, solely first floor plan. Uh, and that was provided to the board, uh, in response to a discussion that we were having regarding the main entryway and the Amazon packages. And we ended up working with the board to provide a, uh, a packaged drop-off area in the foyer and we provided the revised first floor plan to the board in response to show you that we've taken into account the planning board's comments and we added in the mail drop area. That's the only time that that floor plan was submitted to the board and it, it in no way was discussed for unit styles and floor plans, bedrooms or dens.
I would, I would agree that we, um, we didn't get into those details, but I think the thing that would be helpful for me is to really focus on what's the, what's the den space like.
Sure.
Cause I have a, I have a couple of concerns immediately.
Yeah.
One is just that, you know, there's always been the concern with the number of bedrooms and, you know, personally I have maybe a different opinion on that, but, um, I know that if there's a den that can be converted into a bedroom and it turns into a three-bedroom, people are going to come back and say, how did you guys let this happen? That's one concern.
Sure.
The other is that, um, there's a mixture of affordable and non-affordable units and I would want to be sure that, that this is not, um, elevating the, um, non-affordable ones in some way that's, that's, you know, identifiable, you know, like the affordable units don't have the den, but the non-affordable ones do. And so I would want to make sure that that's, it's proportionate, you know, that it's not, it's not distinguishable. Those are the two things immediately that I think about.
Sure. So, you know, just to restate what Abby said, so all of the units, so I think there's, so if you look on the floor plan, I think it's the third and fourth floors and it's...
What are we looking at?
Uh, the color, the color map, but I...
The one you just handed up.
The one I'm handed out.
So I, I think, uh, the units that Abby is looking at and is reviewing for the, for the dens is the F units, which is, there's one F unit on floor two, three and four, and then the, uh, H unit, which is located on, um, floors, um, three and four. So the, the dens or the extra space that Abby is, is speaking of, uh, it's correct. It is not by definition, by building code, those rooms cannot be considered a bedroom. They do not have an egress window. They do not have a closet. And, um, per our discussions with the building inspector, Mr. Perkins, um, when we've been kind of working with Abby and Mike for a while, um, he had suggested and we had kind of talked about a solution to make sure that those openings into the, into the rooms was a wide-cased opening, uh, with no doors. So what I wanted to pass out was, this is the H unit. So this is a revised, uh, building plan that was submitting to the building inspector, which has the, which has the H unit in question and has the den...
That's the, the Hinsdale on here, right?
The Hinsdale, yes. I'm sorry, thank you. Um, it has the, it has the extra room which Abby is speaking about, not the extra room, it has the dining room that Abby is speaking about right off of the kitchen. And I brought some pictures in of, of the room in question. So this, there's some pictures here of the H unit showing the kitchen and showing the dining room that is, is in question. So, uh, I'm really hoping the, well, so I'm, first of all, I'm hoping that the board will, um, will conclude that the plans that we've submitted are in full compliance with our permits and our plans that we submitted at the time of submission. So that's one thing. And then, once we get by that, I'm hoping that we can all talk about the concern is that we all do not want three-bedroom units. We're not proposing three-bedroom units. We understand that and that, that the wide-cased opening into the dining room off of the kitchen is, is not a bedroom and, and that's, and, and that's acceptable and that's in compliance and there's no issue with that. We did, um, and then we, I have similar plans for the F unit. So we did work with Mr. Perkins. We did submit a revised, uh, floor plan for the F unit and I forget, what is the F unit called on?
Um, this one...
Fairdale?
The Fairdale. It's the line you say, yeah. Um, so we did work with the, with the Abby and the building commissioner, the, uh, building inspector, and we removed the doors and we widened the, the cased opening for the F unit. So, um, this is the plan at the building inspector now.
Yeah.
Uh, and you can see that, that the den is there and it, and we've removed the doors and opened up the case opening. And here's some pictures of, of the, of the den.
So for the, for the H unit...
In the F unit.
There's no, I mean, it's, you're calling it a dining room and there really isn't anywhere else to have the dining room.
No, it's, it's, I mean, it's a room off the kitchen.
It's off the kitchen and, um...
And, and one piece of information I, I haven't, um, mentioned yet is that the condo docs have a clear restriction in, in the condominium, uh, master deed and, uh, yeah, and I, I brought it here tonight with me, but, you know, it's very clear, you know, the, the unit, the deeds to the units all come with, it's either a one-bedroom unit or a two-bedroom unit. And then it's very clear that, um, you know, there shall be no additional bedrooms constructed. All units are limited to a maximum of two bedrooms and two-bedroom units and one bedrooms and one-bedroom units. So, um, you know, we've, we've put those safeguards in place as well.
All right. We just didn't review this much detail during the, um, public hearing, um, stage, um, in the wintertime. Um, you know, the floor plans were more, um, general, so we were under, you know, Beta reviewed this and when you reviewed it, we were under the impression that it was two bedrooms and there was shown some of this flex space, flexible space, um, in some of the units, but they weren't clearly labeled or shown with this amount of detail. So that's why it's kind of back to you whether we consider it, um, still two-bedroom units. Um, if so, I mean, I think there would definitely need to be, you would want to have the, um, restriction that, um, that flex space of the dining room or a den could not be converted to a third bedroom, um, in the condo documents and possibly in the, uh, in the deed.
Accomplish that is what? No windows, no doors, no closet?
Right, and usually we would say, usually at least either probably six-foot cased opening, six-foot...
Six-foot cased opening, yeah.
Cased opening so that it's not, you, you couldn't, someone couldn't easily install a, uh, door or, or even more open so that there's just no, and some of these dens, you know, maybe completely open, like, um, you know, no walls around the corner, like, the first floor plan that you received in the, um, during the meeting stage didn't have much of this walls, had this kind of open area in between, which I think was like in between two bedrooms, so maybe not have those little bit of, of walls there.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be in favor of, of maxing out, I mean, it's ea, it's easy to turn some of these spaces into bedrooms. And these, the lenses that were to, used to, the, um, the pictures seem to be skewed a bit. I don't know what kind of a lens was used to take the photos. Well, the, the F unit, so it's five foot ten opening and then it, um, it looks like a pretty good-sized room. It's the same width as the master bedroom, but a little bit less deep. The, um, H unit, this, the, that's that dining room picture, that seems, that's a six-foot, I think it's a six-foot one and a half inch opening, uh, and eleven, eleven by eleven maybe is a hundred and twenty square feet. I mean, isn't six, that looks, that looks narrow to me.
My point is, as long as it's not deeded, it cannot be deeded as a three-bedroom. I mean, my experience is that anyone can walk down to Home Depot, get some lumber and turn a room into a bedroom if they want to call it a bedroom, it doesn't make it a bedroom.
Yeah, but it's a lot easier when the, when the, the spacing is narrowed.
Yeah, so if, if it...
As best we can, I understand that much, but...
I mean, we would have to review it in the final stages and building department review and it's final stages before occupancy permit and then, um, if we, if we were to see something being marketed as a, um, three-bedroom unit, but, I mean, I guess typically that's as much as we can do, uh, anywhere, but trying to prevent the construction from taking place with these, that's why we would encourage the larger openings.
Well, and you get to...
Where the location, um...
And we'll get to a point where, I mean, just because there's a, I mean, can they not have a den at all? And I think that's by having the six-foot opening and, um, no windows, all those things. I mean, you're not going to say that there can't be any extra space in the place.
And, you know, as far as working, I mean, we've done all we can and, like I say, you know, the owner can, you know, do whatever they want and call it whatever they want, but they cannot deed it as such.
Or you, we could impose a condition that it be in the condo documents and in the deed...
It's already in both.
In the deed that it can't be converted to a third bedroom.
And I think that solves the problem right there?
So six-foot.
And by making a wider cased openings, we can make it very difficult. I mean, you do have additional safeguards in the condominium that you don't have in a single-family home, is that the, the, the rules and regulations require any interior modification to the unit needs to get condominium approval. So not only is it not allowed, um, and not only can you not get a, get a building permit from the building inspector, you cannot get approval from the condominium because it's against the rules. So there are as many safeguards as possible that have been put into the planning and, you know, and I'm, I'm hopeful that you will, you will see that, that we are, we're doing what we can.
So it would be, wouldn't it also be a part of the homeowner's, um, the condominium association rules and everything?
It is, it is. I have, I have the excerpt with me. It's already in there.
Not just saying, not just saying it can't be three bedrooms, but if they wanted to, um, put up a door and their neighbors found out, just playing this out, hypothetically, um...
Happens.
Cause I have more than you do.
It happens. Neighbors are the, are the best police.
My son is in college and, uh, he's actually moved back into the den here and, um, is going to be going to school and we just put up a, uh, yeah, I'm not, I'm making this up.
Mm-hmm.
We put up a shower curtain and, uh, hung beads up there and that's his bedroom now. And so then the near neighbor finds out about that and calls the homeowner, you know, the homeowners association.
And they do.
And that's a problem, yeah.
So I think as long as it's in the rules, that's how it would get, uh...
It is.
So it's six-foot wide in the rules.
If they, if someone found out that, um, they had modified the interior, then it would, it would be a violation.
I don't think we have to get into any measurements or anything else. We just cannot be deeded, it can't be a three-bedroom. We put it in the condo rules and regulations, we put it in the, uh, uh...
Right in their deed.
Right into the deed, you know? It cannot be a three-bedroom condominium under any circumstance and...
I'd want that width, though.
With, yeah, we could require six feet. We, that's standard, we say at least the six-foot is at least being...
That's fine, I just don't see it as necessary, but sure.
We're okay with it if it helps.
So we want this revised plan showing a six-foot cased opening?
Yep, no problem.
I think that's, that physically it change, it makes things...
A little bit harder at, at that.
And people could say, well, why is there no door here? Because you can't turn it into a bedroom. Why is it so wide? Because it's, it's a den, not a bedroom.
Can't be a study, you know? I mean, you can call it whatever you want.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that...
So six-foot cased openings, no closets, no windows, and then include in the, all the condo documents in the deed that it can't be converted to a third bedroom.
Or side. Oh, it's only in the, um, it's only in the, the two-bedroom?
Um, right.
Yeah, there's no one-bedroom that's affected, is there?
Um, it's mostly, or they think they're in the two-bedrooms, the, that kind of flex space in the two-bedrooms or...
Well, there's some, there's some, I mean, I didn't focus on any of the one-bedrooms and dens just because you were concerned with the three-bedroom units.
Right, I didn't, the one-bedrooms do have a small, um, some of the one-bedrooms do have a smaller den type.
I would do the same thing with the width, I mean... Yeah, there's, so for example, on the third floor, the, um, yeah, the one-bedrooms there, you have a, a den off to the right of the entryway. I think the same conditions would apply to both.
Okay, I just don't have those floor plans with me tonight.
I don't have all of them. Right, I think they have...
The one-bedrooms actually show a bi-fold door. See this, uh, this is a den, this is, I think, a one-bedroom and it's got this little...
These are, like the one bedroom.
So this is the third floor plan, right? So...
So this is the one-bedroom and that's...
Again, it's, it's, it's a box.
Door, but no...
And you can call that box whatever you want. You know, you can call it Sahara Desert if you want, it doesn't make it that way, you know?
I mean, the, the one-bedrooms, when they did come to you, they did have like the second kind of den space. Um, they do have a door on them, I just, I don't know the width, but...
Yeah, it's more of a French door. That's, so we specifically took the French doors off of that den on the F unit based on Abby and, and the building inspector Mike's, uh, suggestions to, it, I would ask that on the one-bedrooms with the extra room to, to still be allowed to have the optional French doors. I think I wasn't prepared here to come to talk about all of those, um, although I'm really...
Cause I assume that would be like, uh, that could be like an office area or something, right? Or computer...
It is definitely an office area, for sure. I mean, that is, especially the location of, the type of, of homes these are, the location of the homes.
That's why I say, you know, there's, again, there's just boxes here and we're gonna sell the boxes and say this is a one-bedroom group of boxes.
Yeah.
You can do whatever you want with any of it, but it can only be deeded as a single-bedroom unit and that's it. And other than that, they can call every room they walk into a bedroom, it doesn't matter.
All right, Abby, do you have enough? All right, Abby, do you have enough?
Yeah, I think.
So we're okay with the one bedroom and dens, it's the F and the H units, right, Abby?
Is that okay?
So we, yeah, we're ready to, just so you know, the building permit is waiting for us and, you know, the foundation of the first building is complete and we're ready to go vertical. And actually, I don't know if you've noticed, but the foundation of the second building is almost done as well. So, you know, I reiterate that to you because I know that was a big discussion during the process.
It was.
Thank you, yeah, that's, so we're getting, I rode my bike over there the other day and I saw the, I saw how quickly the, the sales office had been put together and the fact that it was behind it started was going.
Yeah, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay, do we need to follow anything yet? Or is this just a vision session?
You can if you, it's not a formal, I guess, I'm, I'm clear in what I'm hearing from you so that I can complete my review.
Great, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's funny that the attorney that was here before, I went to high school with and very, very good friends with him. And this is the first time I've seen him since high school. Couldn't believe that.
Small wealth.
Thank you.
All right, I think those are all of the items that are, are made of regular items. So now we have, I think Abby, you just have a bunch of updates on comprehensive plan process and.
Yes, comprehensive plan, we're moving along. So we do have some applications at the back of the room if you want to take any. I just kind of started this week or the last few days, starting, we updated the website. So we have a comprehensive plan steering committee webpage and then a comprehensive plan update page with information on it. I've started just kind of doing some email blast. We have a new Facebook page. We have, I think, maybe three followers or something.
No, we have like 60 or 80.
Oh, do we? Okay, okay. So the more shares and likes and stuff we get, the, the more people will see it. What else have we done? So we just ordered some like little note cards for Westwood Day that we could hand out after Westwood Day too, but has, you know, if you're interested in signing up notifications, just for the comprehensive plan, we just started that, we just got like a notification list for that. Something will go out in the next day or so on that to people who've subscribed to any of our town listserv will get one, asking if they want to sign up for those notifications. We had something in the community newsletter that went out, I think, a couple of weeks ago for the fall. Westwood Wire in the last couple of days. What else have we done, so?
Are we having a booth at the Westwood Day?
Yes, if you'd like to help staff it, everyone, I know.
I can do two to three.
Two to three, great.
I'm out of town.
I'm away too.
I meant I'm out of town.
Okay. Dave and I, I have to go to a wedding, so I have to leave by 12:30. So I don't know if, if Dave, you're gonna be in early?
I can tag you out.
Okay, are you able to go earlier?
Yeah, I can do that earlier.
Okay, that would be great.
It's better to have it, yeah, yeah.
Rather than like have our stuff sitting there empty. But I think Dave, you're gonna try to be there at 10?
Yeah, I'll be there for the race early and then, yeah, if I can get out of there by noon.
Everyone's got this, but now I get to see what's left over for me.
Okay, are you available? We had, I can stay till 12:30, so then if Brian comes 12:30, 1:30. If Mike, are you able to do 1:30 to 2:30?
Sure.
Thank you. All right, and then.
Try to make sure that there's not more than two there at a time. You don't want any appearance of impropriety.
Oh, that's true, yeah, open meeting rooms and all that good stuff.
So we have a banner now, just got a new banner that says planning board so people will know who we are. Also, if anyone has any other ideas on how to make our table interesting or what to hand out. So we've just ordered these cards that will come in on Friday.
Candy's always good.
Candy, oh yeah. Candy.
Legos for the kids.
We did that one.
They all go onto the tables getting things.
Yep. But it doesn't have to be anything, it'd be a tote bag and a key ring.
Right, so I thought we could have, we could have the application for people interested in the committee. Then we have these little cards at least saying, you know, if you're interested in being a steering committee member, apply by October 12th. And then to sign up to stay involved and learn about notifications and learn more and have the link on the website. We could also like collect, we could also collect email addresses if you wanted to enter them in also. Although that's, it's just harder because then it's hard to read people's handwriting later on. I don't know, I guess we would bring like the iPad, we could bring the iPad, yeah.
What monkey's gonna run that?
Phones, yeah.
Have there, we don't have any, any projects?
Good idea.
To display?
Yes, we could do that once, right.
Yeah, we used to do.
Oh yeah, we did a poster board, okay, I can make a poster of.
What, what project are we gonna propose?
I think we need a dunk tank, actually.
Get a crowd. You want to do the Islington project or, I mean, but it's already said and done.
But we could, yeah, because we could show some pictures because that will be starting soon for an update. Okay, we can, I can.
It may bring people to the booth.
Put together a poster of upcoming construction projects. So the first one coming up will be the Islington redevelopment. The Attorney General approved in the last few days, the zoning change from May. So this was for the nine School Street lot. So that close in, the first closing would probably be in about a month or so. Before that can happen, the, the 12 units at 321 Washington Street have to be approved to the subsidized housing inventory by the state. So that's in process now. Then when that happens, then construction can go forward.
Hold off to the fall, I take it, at this point?
It might be possibly, demolition could start sooner of the Cafe Dupa building, demolition and prep, site prep.
Any other projects?
Oh, and, and other news for Islington Center is that Petruzzello has indicated they are going to save the Blue Heart Tavern and preserve that building. You had left the place, location for it next to the new library and he is interested in renovating that building himself instead of using it as office and then resident, one apartment upstairs. I think that was a, I think that was the plan.
Wouldn't that have to go through another public hearing?
No, that is what you approved. Your special permit left it to be preserved if, if it could be. But you didn't require that Blue Heart Tavern to be restored if they couldn't.
Yeah, well, that's an obsession of use.
I think that was the use, office.
I think we required that it be opened as a brew pub.
No, well, that was the home. It's not big enough.
Well, I'm not sure of the exact use yet, but I know that he is going to try to relocate it to where it was shown next to the Wentworth Hall and restore that building.
No, I like, I like the courtyard effect it creates.
It was previously the office and there was apartment above before it moved from its old location, that's what it was before.
Apartment, no one.
It was a lot of things before it moved, yeah.
That's what it, most recent use was.
Okay.
Right, so I'll, I'll put some pictures of that on the.
Okay. So we have 60 people following or liked the page.
And this is, which Facebook page?
Planning Board.
How do I friend the planning board?
Search for Westwood Planning Board.
I can find the page. You just gotta like it?
Yeah, there'll just be a click follow.
Like and follow, whatever. It's a little complicated, yeah, so just don't blow a gasket in there trying to figure that one out.
I would, I would invite you, but then I'd be in trouble, right?
Yes, yes, it'd be a violation.
So I guess we'd recommend for the Facebook page that you can follow or share, but try to refrain from commenting.
Right.
And so then I'll just try to sporadically, like daily check it to respond to any questions or comments that people have on the post.
And that unit in the, in the 12 unit, the affordable, is that, is that then deeded into the unit even if he doesn't go forward with phase three?
Yes, so right now, before we close on the first closing, so before that transaction happens with the town, it was required that the three units in the existing building, 321, are approved by the state. And that also makes all 12 units eligible for the subsidized housing inventory.
That's regardless of whatever happens.
Yes, so that's required.
Yeah, because a quarter, if 25% in a building are, then all of them.
I'm more concerned if he doesn't go forward with phase three where he then doesn't own the building and it's some other entity.
Right, that's in perpetuity. And that was outlined in more detail in the Board of Selectmen's land, LDA, the land.
And one has nothing to do with.
Right, so whatever happens to the rest.
We're already approved of the apartments, that doesn't change no matter what happens.
Right, well, this, well, this part was required before the first closing, so before the town would sell our land. And then in the, the last phase, the phase three, before construction or before the sale of the ICC building, we would have to have those other two units approved by the state for the listing of the affordable units on the state's housing inventory. So we had pushed those ones off until prior to construction of those new units.
Yeah, that's good, yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, so anything else you can think of for the comprehensive plan? I thought I'd probably send another Facebook and email blast before the weekend at like, join us on Westwood Day. And then I thought we could, once we have the cards and the application, we could distribute those at the library, senior center, town hall, stuff like that.
Thank you for all that work. Other, so other updates, there's no, no town meeting in the fall?
No town meeting in the fall, but I submitted your, I think it was a total of 10 articles from the last time. So we revisit in November and December to submit for January.
Are they already considered submitted?
No, we would, we would resubmit them again.
So we, I was thinking about that. We had that discussion and we said, well, we won't do it for the fall, okay? We bought ourselves like two months.
Well, because there's more time in the winter. There's a longer time period when the war is open. So it usually opens in December and closes in January. So you have more time to discuss what you want to submit. And then the dead trees at, behind that building, 321 Washington Street are being replaced or this week, I think they're gonna be.
Right.
It was depending on the weather, so maybe not today.
Yeah, Amy's been involved in that discussion with you.
So there are the dead, new, dead ones coming out, new ones going in. Since we don't have town meeting, the Housing Partnership, I'm looking at Mike, was looking to have their vision session on Tuesday, November 13th at Downey. So that'll be more on that soon. Oh, actually, I know Pulte was just here, but they had their recent, I guess on a Saturday, sale of condos and they had, I think, sold or have agreements in place for 45 of the market rate units in their first building. Yep.
I heard the line was out, out the door.
Well, they had good success, one day.
Started a waiting list for the.
Yes, started a waiting list for the second building.
So there are 50 in building one, right? Market rate?
There's 45 market rate and five affordable. So the 45 market rate have sold.
They're sold out essentially for building one.
Yeah.
I guess they hit the nail on the head that condo was the way to go.
Well, that kind of tells you the story then, if you've got the other properties are sitting there, the commercial properties that are like Bonefish Grill, although I hear there's something coming maybe for that, but the residential goes like boom.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Well, Bonefish is empty because they, there was a long-term lease.
They're still paying.
So they're still paying for it.
Still making money.
So it's really hard for someone to come in.
I heard that.
There's been interest, there's been interest, but because there's an ongoing lease that's continuing is.
I heard there's a.
Entire Northeast, didn't they?
Yeah.
I think there's still one in Waltham.
There's a couple.
Yeah.
But they've closed a lot of their locations.
So I guess, I heard that there's a.
Somebody told me I thought that they pulled out the entire Northeast.
There's one up in that.
There's a restaurant or a tavern coming, right? Somewhere in town.
They were interested, yes, like.
Red, Red Heat.
Red Heat Tavern?
Red Heat Tavern.
Interested in Bonefish location?
Yeah.
I don't know if it was Bonefish, but I, people were trying to figure out where it was, but. They've got a sign up that says opening in Westwood, so.
Okay.
Moving, next opening will be in Westwood.
Really?
This wasn't careful for the horse?
Yes.
Coming in next. Yeah, is there anything else we need to update on or?
Just, we did hear from someone who's interested in the Westwood Lodge property on senior housing under the open space, open space. Oh, Westwood Lodge, someone is interested in developing under the open space by law, senior housing. So they would need to, they're gonna try to meet with, stay out for the next week or so. There's a lot, 19 or 20, I think. That's, that would be what our preference, our recommendation, town agreement. I don't know, I don't know if it was an easement or agreement. I think we do still use it.
Yeah, there's still games goes on, but not, I don't think little kids play there anymore. It's the adult leagues.
Probably were issues in the past.
So if that moves along, I let them know about the process would be to come to you for a preliminary review, that would be the concept level review. We did a similar process in March with 215 High Street. So we would recommend aiming for, because it would be a public hearing too, so it would probably be a November meeting if they were able to come in and meet with us soon and get something submitted in October, it'd be a November meeting.
Same group?
No, different group.
How many condos?
So I would expect that this might generate some interest in town, yeah?
I don't remember how many.
We haven't done a OSRD, senior housing.
No.
Well, we had a preliminary one.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, right, most of them do.
I can't remember how much they were interested in. I should find out next week, I think, try to meet next week.
That's a new procedure for the board, so we need to make sure we.
Do we get affordability with that?
Yes, so that is required, you require at least 15%. Either, well, your preference, you recommend onsite unless another alternative is approved. And in the past, you've, at the last senior inquiry under this bylaw, the planning board was, had said as long you would consider offsite if they produced at least that same amount, the 15% at another offsite location.
Can you buy it for more or no?
You can ask for it, but I think that was, that was suggested at the, at the other application, possibly more. That makes it difficult if you can ask for more. You can ask, you can always ask, but I think that's what, that was one of the, that's one of the most.
But I buy law states 15%.
15%.
But if they.
So you can ask.
They do 25, then you get the full count, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But then. They may not make their money.
Yeah, so then it would just be a question for them whether they, it's worth it for them to go forward.
If we push too hard.
Exactly.
And then you're left with nothing.
Who else could buy it and what else they gonna want to do? I mean, it's.
It's a, it's a balancing act.
We'll find out when they come.
Yep.
All right.
Anything else? All right.
Minutes approval, September? July, August and?
July, August and September. And I just made a few changes late today that I, sorry, I didn't print out, but I think it was in the August 1, when we were talking about the speed limit. There was kind of a note that didn't, reference to another community, other communities didn't quite capture, so I just deleted that. And then the September 15, September 5th meeting minutes, I clarified that the planning board discussed the FMUOD redevelopment application, but recommend the applicant file the EIDR now within the 30 days to correct the outstanding zoning violation related to the illegal parking. So I just made that a little more clear in that September 5th meeting minutes.
All right.
So those are the changes from.
Do I make a motion to approve the minutes?
I think it's.
From, uh, September. July 10. July tenth, August the seventh, and September the fifth.
I second that.
I have a motion any second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Like to make a motion to, uh-
Close the meeting?
Close this meeting?
I second that.
All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.